So I will call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And present, I have Lucy Thayer and Erica Burner. And Jill Burkett is on the phone. Right now, absent is Tony Musack and Kevin Mullin. But we do have a quorum. So, um, the agenda is to, for Jill's benefit, the chair to call the meeting to order, additions, deletions to agenda items, review and approval of the minutes of the, and that should be, it says June, it should say September, I apologize. Zoning administrator report for September, proposed zoning regulations, the draft of the proposed solar landscaping, the draft of the proposed Airbnb regulation or short-term rentals, and Kevin with livestock. Comments from the public, meeting, next meeting is 8 November, and then we adjourn. So that is the agenda.
Okay.
Any changes, except for the fact that we need to approve the September meetings instead of the June as stated? If not, may I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Lucy is...
One second.
Yeah. And Jill? Okay. As amended. Okay. And any comments on the minutes?
Um, I, I move that we wait till next month to approve the minutes since, uh, let's see, Tony's not here and Jeff was out.
That's right. That's right. I'm sorry. You can't vote on it, Lucy.
Okay.
So Jill is making a motion to table.
My second thought.
Uh, Lucy, Lucy seconds. All in favor? Obviously, aye.
Aye.
Jill?
I, 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 yes, aye.
Thank you. Okay. Zoning administrator report, we are up to, as of today, forty-five permits for the, for the year.
Wow.
Which, which is running just about neck and neck from last year, so we're doing very well. I, uh, the zoning administrator's office approved three permits, uh, three individual permits for the block. Two were for, uh, a, two separate individuals using the same office for their yoga and massage, and then one for the community center. That was today, by the way. And that apparently is going to be an area set aside for additional yogurt or any other classes, not yogurt, yogurt, sorry, additional classes and everything, and that was issued to Michelle herself. The other two permits were issued to the individuals that will be running their companies. So we're just about neck and neck with last year. And so far, there's no, nothing coming up for the DRB. So, okay. The proposed solar landscaping, do you want to table that or wait until Kevin comes?
Yeah, I think that, um, it would benefit Tony, if Tony's not going to be here, I think he would, he drafted the original one, so I would, I would vote to table it until, to next month, I suppose.
Okay. So Lucy makes a motion, Jill?
I agree, yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Alrighty. Um, I have had inquiries on what is meant by short-term rentals, what is meant by Airbnb, what are we going to do about it, and so on and so forth. So, looking at other regs and the fact that Vermont has not approved anything just yet, but they do have a lot of regulations for short-term rentals, but nothing specific. I thought perhaps the best thing to do, uh, in the zoning is just to add a small section with a couple of statements that, and I'll read it for Jill's benefit, that basically says, "Short-term rentals," and in parentheses, "Airbnb, bed and breakfast, et cetera, except where permitted, require a conditional use permit upon approval by the Development Review Board. Short-term rentals are subject to Vermont statutes pertaining to short-term rentals."
Oh, okay.
Something very sweet.
Yeah.
Um, there are statutes, and there's a whole bunch of paperwork, and I can add that in there, but I think what we're trying to do is basically say, "You really need to have a permit in order to operate an Airbnb," unless I'm mistaken. And primarily because, and I am saying this specifically for PEG TV, primarily because if you don't have an operating permit, the insurance won't cover any problems you may have with any rentals. And that's really the bottom line, is if you are, have a home occupation and you don't have an operating permit for it, something happens, your insurance isn't going to cover it. You're a business, you don't have a building permit, but you're renovating and you're adding and you're subtracting and doing things that you should have a permit for, the building burns down, somebody gets hurt, you, the insurance company basically turns around and says, "Where's your building permit? You don't have it." They don't cover it. And that's really...
Right.
...why I wanted to keep this short and sweet.
Yeah, and it just, that's in alignment with, um, other things that require state, state permits and all that stuff, you know?
Yeah. Well, and there are a lot, and I've had, I've had people inquire about Airbnbs in the last couple of months and every, uh, everything over the summer, and I've actually downloaded all of the paperwork pertaining to that, and I've given, I've given people copies of it, what they should do, how they should, what they should look for, how they should operate, in the sense of bathrooms and fixtures and, um, other things that the state thinks is important. And, um, none of it really is that much as, as it is for the safety of the operator and the safety of the person renting. So...
Exactly.
Yeah. So I will go ahead and add that to the regulations in the proper section, which would be under general regulations, I think, and with your approval for both of you, um, we can maybe put this part to bed. Okay?
Okay.
So, I made the motion for a change. And Lucy, second?
Second.
Lucy, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right. Okay. And Kevin isn't here yet, so shall we get on to comments from the public, which we don't have any comments? So, um, I actually had an addition if Kevin was here, but I'll start. Um, what I, I've been talking to other, um, other planning commissions, and, and of course, we had the ones from West Rutland last week, last month when we were here. What I would like to do is finally get our regulations to where we, as the board, like, think that they're done, like them, think that they're done. And before we go to a public hearing, maybe, and I'm asking for input, much more so than anything, um, maybe ask the select board for permission, if we need it, to send it over to the VCLT, Vermont, Vermont's...
League of Cities and Towns.
Yeah, thank you. Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns, and have their lawyers review it. The Rutland Regional Planning Commission, Ed Bove, has been pretty much on top of it with me when I've given him a copy or I've asked him something, but, um, I think the VCLT would go through it. I read the ones that we, um, we got from Jeff as a sample, and I like the idea of having them look through it and make suggestions, if any, and, um, before we go to a public hearing again.
I think that's a wise idea.
Okay. So, if the two of you approve, if Kevin comes, I'm sure Kevin will come too, um, if everyone approves, then what I'd like to do is, um, I'll add this section in here. And if you recall, last, uh, month, one of the things we talked about was turning the livestock, taking it out of the zoning and making it an ordinance, and presenting it to the select board. Perhaps we should contemplate doing that and working on that next month. And, um, maybe we can get this to the VCLT and have them get it back to us whenever they can, and get it off our plates.
And should we wait till we get word back from them first before we decide to make an ordinance?
Oh, yeah.
Or no?
Yeah. Um, the select board is meeting on Monday. I can, um, ask Sandy for a spot on the agenda and just tell the select board what we're thinking of doing and seeing what they say. And all the select board can say basically no, or the select board can say basically that sounds like a good idea.
Do we need their approval to do this, or no?
I would say, I would prefer to have their approval.
Wait, are we talking about, are we talking about sending it to the VLCT, or are we talking about the ordinance versus...
Both. Making the livestock into an ordinance, uh...
Because they do need to approve the ordinance.
Yeah. Hi, Kevin.
We have Jill on the phone?
Yes, Jill's on the phone, Tony's on vacation. We thought we'd start without you.
I understand.
So, and, uh, just to bring you up to speed, we're talking about two things. One is presenting the, taking the livestock, as we talked about last month, taking it out, making it into an ordinance, and presenting it to the select board. And the other is formatting and getting the proposed regulations into where we like them as a planning commission, and then sending them off to the VCLT with the select board's permission for drafting before we have a public hearing.
Good.
Okay? So, um, do you have anything on the livestock, or...
I do.
Okay. All right. So we'll go back to the livestock.
Well, one of the things I felt it was important to state is why we're doing this at all. And I had three reasons, and I leaned very heavily on the second one, but number one, to protect the historic nature of the village proper. I hope we can all agree on that. Number two is to protect citizens and pets from predators, which these animals attract. With the increase in the boldness of such predators, bears, wild cats, and foxes are being seen in the villages even in broad daylight, this is a genuine concern. Down in Arlington, they had a wildcat raiding chickens within four hundred yards of the school.
Wow.
Yeah, I have pictures of that. And, uh...
Are you talking about fisher cats, too?
I, I have a picture. I don't know what it looks like. It's brown, and it's moving at the speed of light, so the pictures are blurred. But, um...
No, I think there's fisher cats around now than ever.
Yeah. And, and it's becoming serious. Over on seven, the old seven, Route 7, it's now 7B, a bear went down the middle of the road, attacked a horse who broke through the stall, and then was hit by a truck and killed.
Oh, my goodness.
In broad daylight. This was about...
Well, I've never had that here when I have, but, um, I had a fisher cat here just destroy one of my cats last spring.
And the third one, I thought, was to...
Sorry, you destroy.
To serve those villagers who have brought or maintained property in the village with an expectation of not having to deal with animals. And those are the three reasons I think that we ought to be doing this at all. And, uh...
Another thing they draw, uh, chickens really draw of livestock, if there's manure or feed, is raccoons, and there's more rabid raccoons around than ever before.
Right. The people I talked to in Fish and Game said that the raccoons are larger this year than they have ever seen, some of them upwards of a hundred pounds.
Really?
Yes.
Yep. Yep, huge.
I never knew a raccoon could be that big.
I didn't either. I saw one the other night, and I wish that I had my camera to take a picture. But it's become a serious thing because they are, we're pushing on their territory and they're pushing back. And we can, we can talk about...
And once again, I had other cat destroyed by a raccoon several months before the fisher cat.
We can talk about all the this's and that's and all, but when a child is molested because an animal's in the area to, to hunt prey, all of that gets shoved to the side, all of it.
Okay. So, do you have a draft of...
Yeah, I do. Um, yeah. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Do we want to discuss that tonight, or do you want...
Oh, I'm fine with it. I made copies, but...
Okay.
Some of them aren't very good because my copying machine ran out of blue. I don't know why blue is necessary to print black, but, um, and I had a very emotional afternoon because our thirteen-year-old daughter, great-granddaughter, was caught in an active shooting scare down in Florida, and she was huddled under her desk texting us in fear.
A school shooter?
Yeah, active shooter. So, um, it's been a tough day.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. Absolutely.
Well, it turned out that somebody was pulling a prank, but let me tell you something. Those children were scared to death because they have had shooters at that school before. I'm trying to get, I've got, the only one I have that's in order is this one. I'll put the rest of these in order. Could you give that to Erica, please?
Okay.
Now I understand. Yeah, I have a real fear this year that there's going to be some serious animal maulings in, in areas we used to consider the town, you know? I mean, it, it's different if you're living out by where I live or where Jill lives, but as I said, on 7B, which is just up the road, that bear was going right down the middle of the road and just turned on the horses. And this morning, when I was bringing children to school, there was a stallion racing full speed down the middle of the middle road, being chased by something. We couldn't figure out what it was. So it's, it's real, you know? I got so many things. Sorry I'm late.
No, that's okay.
It'll be that way. Okay. That's one page. How many copies did I make of that page? There's another one. Yeah, I was talking to somebody out in the west to find out what they do about this. They just shoot everything.
Oh, we have an ordinance against firearms.
I know that, but that's pretty much what they do.
Yeah.
I said, you know, they say, "Hey, look, we know they're there, and we shoot everything."
Okay, well, basically, Jill, I'll read it while Kevin, or do you have it?
No, no. Go ahead.
Got it? Okay.
I'm still putting this together.
Okay. "No livestock is defined in the required agricultural practices shall be allowed in the zone designated as the quote 'village proper' unquote, with the exception of chickens being raised for personal family consumption or as a home occupation for the purpose of selling eggs. The following criteria must be met for limited scale within the village proper. One, no animal should be kept in such a manner, such a place or manner as to be offensive or cause a nuisance to persons residing in the vicinity. The buildings and yards shall be kept deodorized by the application of dry earth or other effective absorbent or disinfectant. All farm animals so kept within the village limits shall be confined in an enclosure and shall not be permitted to run at large. Violation of the provisions of this section shall constitute violation of this ordinance. Two, no manure pile shall be stored within the village limits and shall be removed and discarded in an ecologically responsible manner. Three, manure piles must be located as to minimize the possibility of pollution to wells and surface waters. In the absence of a, of an otherwise acceptable plan, manure pile shall be located no closer than two hundred feet from surface water. If a manure pile is located upslope from a well, the isolation distance shall be at least two hundred feet. If it is located downslope from a well, the isolation distance shall be at least one hundred feet. No slaughtering of chickens will be allowed outside of agricultural zones and must comply with the Vermont State Agency of Agricultural Food and Markets." And there is a website there. Okay. Uh, regarding chickens, A, number, no more than twelve chickens for each single family dwelling. Okay? And in parentheses, the comment, "This is generous, as many village limit the number to six or eight." B, setbacks, coops or cages shall be at least twenty-five feet from the door or window of any dwelling or occupied structure other than the owner's dwelling. Coupes and cages shall not be located within five feet of a side yard lot line or within eighteen inches of a rear yard lot line. Coupes and cages shall not be located within the front yard. C, enclosure, hens shall be provided with a covered waterproof coop or cage that is well-ventilated and designed to allow for easy cleaning. Hens shall have access to an outdoor enclosure that is adequate, excuse me, adequately fenced to contain the birds to the property and to prevent predators from accessing the birds. D, roosters, it is unlawful for any person to keep roosters. Regarding rabbits, in general, one, primary enclosures, enclosures shall be structurally sound and maintained in good repair to protect the rabbits from injury, to contain them, and to keep predators out. Ooh, Welsh rare, but, sorry. I know, that's the cheese. Two, primary enclosure, enclosures shall be constructed and maintained so that the rabbits contained therein have convenient access to clean water and food, or food and water, sorry. The floors of the primary enclosure, enclosures shall be constructed so as to protect the rabbit's feet and legs from injury. Litter shall be provided in all primary enclosures having solid floors. Four, a suitable box containing clean nesting material shall be provided in each primary enclosure housing a female with a litter less than one month old. Five, space requirements, primary enclosures shall be constructed and maintained so as to provide sufficient space for the animals to make normal postural adjustments, okay, with adequate freedom for movement, so they can kind of stretch.
Stretch out.
Okay. And then, uh, we've already seen this before, but there's a definition of what livestock shall be, shall include but not be limited to, bovines, domestic cows, cattle, bulls, ox, and bison's buffaloes, Suidae, S-U-I-D...
Pigs and boars.
Pigs and boars. Boveday, uh...
Hughes, ram, sheep.
Right. Hughes, ram, sheep, and goats, domestic poultry, chickens, layers and meat, turkeys, geese and ducks, roosters, guinea hens, guinea fowl and squabs. Those are good. Equine, horses, donkeys, mules, zebras, and asses. Lepreitora, my Latin's horrible, sorry, uh, lepre, lepretoridae, I think, rabbits, bunnies, and hairs, cavies. Guinea pigs, being part of the rodent family, are considered pets. Their breeding is discouraged by veterinarians and the zoning board. Their number shall be limited to four, and if litter arrives, the younger to be dispersed after a period of no more than four weeks. And they really ought to be separated. I had guinea pigs. They multiply, if you'll excuse the expression, like rabbits.
Yep.
Uh, exotic pets shall be licensed, if required by the state of Vermont, shall be housed in an appropriate domicile and be kept under the control of the owner at all times. So, open for discussion.
Um, I think, oh boy, I think it was towards the beginning, the setback was only twenty-five feet from a dwelling?
Cages.
From a neighbor's one?
Um...
I think it needs to be twenty-five feet. I think it's B or two.
Coupes or cages shall be at least twenty-five feet from the door or window of any dwelling or occupied structure other than the owner's dwelling.
Yeah, that's not far enough, twenty-five feet? Uh-uh.
Well...
These chickens smell so bad.
That could be mis-sized, but that's what it is in most of them.
They might, they're wrecked. Twenty-five feet is not far at all.
Yeah.
It needs to be, they are feet.
Well, we're, really, now, some, few exceptions, at least since we're talking specifically in the village. Most of the yards in the village, um, if you say twenty-five feet from the nearest dwelling, um, you're going to be in the, almost in the middle of your backyard anyway.
Yep.
So I know, for example, and I'll use myself, um, if I had to be twenty-five feet from my neighbor's, uh, uh, structure, which is her garage, but it does have a home occupation in it, that would set it pretty much in the middle of my yard. However, that would keep me just about thirty feet from my other side neighbor. So, you know, I think for the village proper, twenty-five feet might be, um, really...
I thought it was a workable number.
It's, it's workable. So, and...
I thought it would be fifty feet before, but when we discuss this, but...
Well, we...
The manure piles were fifty feet.
Yeah, the manure piles are fifty feet.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. And...
If you had a chicken coop twenty-five feet from your back door, I'm telling you, you're going to have a problem with it. I can tell you that, tell you that, tell you that.
Oh.
Just from having chickens, you know?
Yeah. Well, and...
I mean, I, my barn door, and twenty, and they're twenty-five feet away, and you're already experiencing it.
Yeah. Well, and, um, coops and cages, coops and cages should not be located within five feet of the side yard lot line or within eighteen inches. We already have specific setbacks, which are ten feet, so we can actually take that out, and basically...
Okay. Modify that.
Yeah, modify that and say, uh, "Coupes and cages should not be located within the district setbacks," or, you know, "Not be located..."
Right.
"...within the setbacks."
Mm-hmm.
Because, uh, the setbacks, I believe, are ten feet, so you're already ten feet into your property. And yes, please, not, not on the front yard. That's like the discussion we had last week about solar panels and garages being placed in the front yard in, um, Williston, I think it was. Okay? Um, anything, anything else?
Um, oh, is there anything about exotic?
Yeah.
Yes.
Exotic animals, exotic birds? I'm sorry, it's hard to hear every last word you said, but...
Sorry.
I didn't hear exotic.
Shall be licensed if required by the state of Vermont, shall be housed in appropriate domiciles, and be kept under the control of the owner at all times.
But, um, I think it was under, um, farm animals or agricultural animals? You read a list?
Yes. That's part of the list.
And exotic birds or whatever's on there, like ostrich and peacocks?
They're not by name. It's just exotic pets.
Okay. You know how people pick through the gray areas?
Well... Well...
And peacocks, beautiful, but you don't want the next door to you.
No.
Just like guinea hens. Yeah, nobody will sleep. Yeah. Okay.
Well, what we could do on something like that is, um, we could reference the Vermont statute, and if anybody's really interested, kind of go into it and see, because it does say it's licensed. So, that would mean exotic animals like peacocks would have to have a license.
Yeah.
By the state.
And part, part of that involves the state, you have to demonstrate to the state that you're equipped to properly raise these animals.
Okay.
Yeah. And no, you don't want peacocks. You can hear them a mile away.
Yeah.
So...
So, we're talking about, we're talking about village proper?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, are people going to still question what is considered village proper since we have many names for the village?
The village proper, with the research that I've been able to do, is basically the three village propers, because we have three villages, don't forget. East Wallingford, South Wallingford, and Wallingford. In Wallingford, it is the village proper, or whatever you want to call it, apparently is the fire district, Fire District 1. That is considered the village proper, and that's pretty much, not 100%, and don't hold me to it because I don't have the paper in front of me, is pretty much from where Seven, and I could be wrong on this, where Seven comes into Wallingford down to One Lane, and it goes to the bridge.
Okay.
Okay? Somewhere in there, it becomes the village proper. And the same goes for East Wallingford, and the same goes for South Wallingford. And Julie actually has maps on her bulletin board in the town clerk's office as to what exactly they are. And...
Okay.
We discussed that a couple of months ago.
Yes, we did.
In the Historic Society, which has been considered, and apparently that was approved as being the village propers, the three. So, I think we probably should define it one more time.
Right.
Or at least get a copy of the maps and...
Yeah, that, I think the maps would be the best way to do it.
Yeah. We could add it to the zoning. It's supposed to be in the town plan anyway, and I believe it is, but if we want, we could add it to the zoning, or we could just say, "reference the town plan."
It needs to be on a map somewhere in the zoning regulations.
I think so, too. Okay. So, include the maps. So, my question to the board is, since we're going to be looking at this again, do you want this, the maps in the front, or you want them in the back?
I would want them in the back and just say, "reference maps."
Okay.
Yep. Do you have an opinion on that?
Okay. So, appendix, I believe that's appendix A or appendix B. I'll, I'll take a look at that for the village propers. Okay. Okay. Any other discussion?
No, I'm just letting you know that I don't, as I said, I don't have a dog in the fight, so to speak. I don't live in the village proper, and I don't have any pets. But being fair to everybody, I thought this was the best I could do. Whatever we do with it, I'm happy.
Should we put for each village proper? Because somebody's going to say, "Well, you didn't designate which village proper." You know how that goes.
It'll show on the map, but yes, you can...
Well, we could also just change one, one letter, line three, "in the zones designated as a village proper."
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Village propers, plural, since we have three?
No, because the zones are designated as, the zones are designated as village proper. So, that's a collective noun.
No, actually, they're not. They're not.
Okay.
So, we have districts, we have zones. The zones are agricultural, rural, so on and so forth. So, um...
Want to change the word from zone to area?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Village, so village propers, and maybe, I, it doesn't cost us anything, maybe put it in there, you know, Wallingford, East Wallingford, South Wallingford.
Yeah.
So, you know, the three towns.
Yep.
I'd be really interested.
It's just simplifying it.
I'd, I'd really like to see where these village propers actually are, like what the physical delineation is.
Yeah.
See what's included in those, those areas.
Well, I, the...
Yeah, no, I, I know.
It's that one.
But, I mean, like, actually, just like the map that we're talking about.
Yeah.
To see how far this goes and how many people it impacts.
Truthfully speaking, except for, except for Route 7, it doesn't really impact a whole heck of a lot of people. I mean, very seriously, you're, you're talking very small blocks here. But I think, and I'm, and I'm trying to recall because I didn't bring, I, I, it's, it's in the papers. But East Wallingford would be about where the post office is and that general vicinity, and that's it.
I know. I want to see it, but I just, I like, want to see the map piece, or like, just the...
Of course.
Yeah. Because I get, I get, I like, I know the general area, but just what is actually included in this proper.
I'm not sure that we do have it aligned. So, go ahead. Any other comments or questions or anything? So, what do you want to do now? What is the board's pleasure?
Well, my, from what I take, we'll adjust the language and pass it on to somebody for review.
Okay.
Like the town board, or the, and then if they're happy with it, we'll put it out to the voters.
Well, we'd have to, they'll have to have a public hearing 45 days' notice and all this other, and everything else, too.
Yeah.
One of the things that we were talking about before you came in, Kevin, was that I suggest that we get the zoning regulations into the format and everything else that we want, and in the meantime, ask the select board, after we approve it, if we could send it off to the VCLT.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, just so you know. Okay. All right. So, Kevin, you'll get back to us on this, or...
I just, I don't...
With the changes?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to accept this as a change to go before the select board, or bring it to the select board, or what do you all want me to do with it?
Um, I think we could, we gotta keep moving forward. We're just, you know, this has been going on quite a long time, so I think we need to bring it to the select board.
I agree.
I think that sounds fine. I am still generally, I think you've done a really good job, Kevin. I am generally still skeptical about the, about it, so I come at it with reservations.
What did you say?
I come at this with reservations, Jill, is what I said, that I'm not like, I'm not fully convinced that it's the right path.
Uh-uh. Okay.
Okay.
Um, I think if, uh, to me, it's a clear outline than we've, we've had, and I think it's going in the right direction.
Well, I agree. I, I, I know how everybody else feels, and I, I would reiterate, I think Kevin did a nice job and a lot of work, just sharing my, where I'm coming from.
Um, I think if we put it before the select board now, then they'll give us some guidance if we, you know, what the next step is, rather than pretty much for now.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
Rework this.
Okay. So, Kevin, Kevin will rework. And I would suggest that you send it around, perhaps, and we get approval, which means we won't necessarily bring it on Monday, but we can bring it to their meeting, the first meeting in November.
Okay.
Okay. So, could I have a motion? All right. I'll make a motion. I guess I can do this. Motion to rework. Once approved, send it to the select board by their first meeting in November, which I believe, hold on, let me get the date, would be the 7th, by 7 November. Okay? So, we can ask to be put on the agenda on the 7th of November. Okay?
So, you made that motion. We need somebody to second it.
Yep. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second if nobody else is, if everybody else is shy. I do want to ask one question just to correct, so I understand. Under the setbacks, where I have five feet of a side yard, you're saying 10 feet is the town setback?
I think she said, yeah, just refer to the...
Okay.
No, nothing shall be placed within the setbacks.
Okay.
Yeah. Because setbacks vary from the zoning district. And the zoning districts, for example, the Route 7 goes through three different zoning districts.
Mm-hmm.
And the zoning districts take precedent over the district.
So, what I have here now is, "Cops and cages shall not be located within the setbacks as designated by the zoning districts."
Right. Thank you. Okay? All right. Okay? So, any other comments? Anything else? Then...
Could I know?
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Kevin does a second, Jill does a first. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned at 7:46. Our next meeting is the 8th of November.